Four boxes to booking glass as well as another socks, uh, glass is a homeless. There may help a homeless, uh, I think there's just a matter of project road. And then we their best to make the box better than what we in the food.
Yeah, yeah, they're stationed out in June, uh, 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 Boston, London, really cool. They were very appreciative. Uh, they kind of got to show me their donation center and all the stuff that they're taking in. And what this going works, which is. And we get our, uh, toilet, their boxes. Yeah, and I got to deliver some of those to the families.
Great.
And, uh, it'd be great.
Uh, we had a powder puff and he man, uh, juniors on powder puff. And then seniors one he man. Um, I mean, it went to like a fun people kickoff early morning. It was pretty impressive.
Yeah, I heard like eight, eight kickoffs or something, something like that.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna start talking about it, but we'll rant about it.
Awesome, but that was really fun. Uh, we had a good amount of student involvement in some of the competition. And then when your sports just started, we've got girls and boys basketball and wrestling. Um, our basketball team recently played with the Nashville Catholic College from Australia. And our boys basketball team beat them, so that was a fun event. Um, I believe wrestling is at Central City today and then both boys first basketball. Okay, so.
Sandy and Brittany Friday. And Ryan.
Uh, having updates for our National Arms Society, um. They volunteered professional retreat over Thanksgiving break. I did that. I was doing the final, you know, thank you to all reporters. And so the little gift I think it was pretty cute. And then, um, we did a fall fundraiser, so when holiday is. Uh, to raise money for Christmas presents for what we're gonna be need. I was a little bit shocked for them. It was a funny speaker here is gonna be delivered them next week. And then they're doing a coat drive, which I believe is just the like individuals, but if anybody wants to bring anything. Then I'm sure they'll be open to that as well. Backwards.
He has a monitor on. It happens sometimes, don't worry.
Uh, some updates for the school. Uh, last week was holiday vacation week at Crystal High School. They had activities every day for the seniors. Um, they helped out some scholarship applications. Uh, we have two student teachers in the building right now. Miss Babs is one of them. And then our source of strength did a. A little quarter to try and spread gratitude, uh, for Thanksgiving, it's a picture right there.
Okay, before you move on, can you talk about sources of strength?
Yeah, so sources of strength is, uh, I can mention college orange. Truth, um, they need every month to talk about how to spread awareness across the school. I'm not like totally informed about it. I'm not in it, but.
And it's a new club, right?
Yes.
Is that what, yeah, is that what last year really? That sounds awesome. I love that.
And then, oh, with the, so with their bulletin board, they gave out like dirty hands. And you'd write like five things you were grateful for, and then went around each box and said they would like.
Great. Who's the advisor of that?
Laurie, Noggle and Kelly Trent Valley.
Okay, all right, very cool, very cool. And we can pack on kudos to them for helping with that. I think that's a great, great thing.
And then more updates, uh, we're gonna call, we're happening in the gym, which I noticed. I'm grateful for that because I remember, I don't have one more, but I used to. I remember I'd be running like for practice and I'd be like trying to run and I'd like roll my. So that is gonna be a lifesaver for a lot of people. And then our softball and baseball fields are looking pretty good. They made a lot of progress. Um, I've noticed a lot of students recognizing that, like, I think. A lot more students have shown interest, like in the sports, just seeing the newer fields. Which is exciting, especially for me. And then, and, um, leadership is gonna be assembled for next Friday.
Uh, yeah, so we're doing a little, uh, similarly before everybody has to turn, uh, which is. See the snowball, I see, I've been planning during the snowball by, uh, staff and students. Uh, seniors also are getting congratulated for being the staff in, uh, donations with the food drive. So they're getting to hi a teacher in the face, which is pretty cool. Uh, so we're also fighting back.
Who's the teacher?
It's gonna be raffle. So the first thirty students, the first thirty seniors in the gym are gonna get a raffle ticket. Throw a raffle ticket. That senior will get to select one of the line of teachers. Feel excited. But, uh, yeah, so that's a little bit of something.
Our freshman year of the, no, it was a pretty big deal.
Oh.
It was exciting. One of the, one of the students got high. That was probably the best part. Probably the highlight of the year. Then here's our flyer for our Bulldog Holiday Market. Okay, pass all these out, um.
Great.
It is, um, a market, uh, we sell like the CTE made classes. There are goods that they made, and then it's also an opportunity for student offhand boards to open up shops for their business and. Salesmen their goods. In like collaboration with the Winter Lights Festival, which will be the one side.
I love the fact that you guys are doing that when you have the market at the springtime sometime last year. Loved all the things that were for sale. So the fact that this is gonna be outwardly community, this is great.
Yeah, I was involved with that one in the spring and that was super fun. So I'm excited to see how this one, especially in a more community.
Yeah, me too.
The triangle, the lands handed out, just talk about the, the start of the CTE program. But also like date and date for the Bulldog Market in the spray is on there. Maybe need ten.
Okay.
Sweet. Same as the, the, um.
That's not the leadership idea, but. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, yes.
Yeah.
Any questions?
But thank you. Love the PowerPoint too, way to go.
Man, I tell you, that's a professional presentation. That's nice job. You know, we're gonna say you personally, you know, with the sense of reading change, fantastic job.
Yeah. You guys, you can sneak out to go study?
Uh, we're, we're in Austin.
Okay. I told you that would make me get more comfortable by unfamiliar faces.
Um, can I have a second?
So I'm still there. I'm not quite ready.
Okay. Yeah, I is, you're here for the next one.
I'm here for the next one. You guys. Oh, forward. Let's go with Spence. Can I have one of these for my classroom? Um, so I managed to lose my voice in the last hour, like they just talked to me, uh, two hours ago and I was totally fine. So I stand far away from it.
No worries.
Good timing for me, right? And don't worry, it's not like this is what I've been doing all day. Um, yeah, nice job. I believe with your presentation was fun. Um, in case you guys don't know, I'm Liz Babs. I, uh, not only in the leadership, uh, group, but I also am a part of the ELA department. Um, what I'm here to talk about today is the, like, I know that you guys last, last time talked about. The larger data that looked at like the Sback data and kind of looked at that across schools, right? Um, and I really wanted to show what we've been working on like as a team with the Language Arts Department. I'm actually really excited about this work and I'm really excited to share it with you guys. Okay, so as a team, we've really been working to identify major writing skills. So, you know, ELA is really tasked with teaching so many different skills. Um, we teach everything from, you know, Shakespeare to poetry. To seminal documents, to informational pieces, to scholarly pieces. A little the writing and, you know, every kind of writing you can imagine, from narrative to poetry to literary analysis. Um, and so, you know, when you ask a ELA team like, well, let's see the data, it's like, oh my goodness, like. That's a lot of information. Um, so as a group, we really looked and we decided that we wanted to look at our writing skills. Um. As a team, we thought that the writing skills is really where everything else gets funneled into, right? If, if we're looking at writing skills, we're also seeing how students are reading, right? How students are reading both fictional and informational texts, because that's gonna show up in how they're writing. So this is a really great place for us to start. So what we did is at the team, I would say, I would say about three years ago. Right, um, we really started focusing on our PLCs and our content area teams. Um, and at the beginning, what we did was we sat down and we said, okay, these are the big standards, the big skill we want to hit. Um, as far as writing, we looked at what the Sback assesses for and we wanted to align with that. Uh, not only because, of course, those students will be taking it junior year. But it was just a really great starting place of like, okay, these are obviously skills that we want these kids to be leaving high school with. So as you can see up here, the Sback, uh, on their test for the eleventh graders, they use three extended writing assessments. They write one informative slash explanatory, um, writing assessment. In which they are using different sources and then have to explain something going from those sources. Uh, they also write an argumentative, they also read sources and then have to argue a case, then they do a narrative. So we looked at that as a team and we decided to do an informative explanatory writing piece. Um, which I will probably decline synthesis from here on out. But what synthesis really means is taking from different sources and putting it in one piece of. Right? We also decided to focus on argumentative and literary analysis, right? English is classically literary analysis, a lot of this branch out with all of these other things. Uh, we're gonna look into focusing on narrative. Uh, we felt like students get that skill in a lot of other places. Um, so we really wanted to focus on those big parts.
Liz, tell me what narrative means again.
Oh, so narrative, narrative is going to be like a personal story or storytelling.
Storytelling.
Yeah, storytelling rather than like telling information about something, analyzing something.
It's storytelling.
Yes, good question. Um, so I kind of wanted to show where we've been and where we are going and then we can look at how we've been compiling data. So, like I said, we looked at those major writing skills. And then we decided, okay, how are we gonna articulate them across grade levels, right? Because ninth grader and fourth graders, while we're gonna look at the same skill, right? Which is gonna be informational writing, they're not gonna be doing the same tasks and getting the same instruction. Because they're different levels of students. So how do we as a team, uh, identify that? So what we've done is we've aligned our instructions so that content and rigor fits each grade level. Then we worked to align our rubrics and graphic work nights, which I'll get into that in a second. So in our first year, uh, like three years ago, um, like I just said, we identified those major skills, right? And we created a vertical alignment. I'll just show you what this looks like real quick. We won't get into it because it's a working document. So this is really what we worked on. Um, we looked at what each grade level reads. Um, like the big kind of units they do. And then how they're fitting each of those target standards through those units. Um, this is very much a working document that we continuously upgrade and update. And if you wanna look at it in more depth, we can have it here, but we won't get into the nitty gritty of it. But I want to, this is, this is where we started. So then in our second year, what we did is we worked to align our rubrics. So. When we're collecting data, um, what we have found, what we started before all of this, is that what the problem was. Is we are looking at. Like all different skills we were looking at and all the teachers were using all different rubrics. Uh, and that's not a great way to look at data if you are looking at different things and using different measures for those things. It was really hard to sit down. It was like comparing apples and oranges. Uh, so this was the next step that I was really proud of. So you guys will take a look first at the one that says smarter balance. So does everybody have one that says smarter balance in front of them?
Yes.
So this is obviously the smarter balance rubric. Uh, this is what they use to take tests. In order to assess those extended writing, um, pieces. So we took this and we used it at our jumping off point and we made our own rubrics. That aligned with our students, our instruction, you know, all of the English teachers, we have backgrounds in English. Um, and so we use those skills that we have along with these state skills. So then in front of you, you should also have, well, go ahead. We should also have. So, you should also see this one that says synthesis rubric. So this is what the English department uses, just rip synthesis. So of course, we have a different rubric for every one of our skills. We're just gonna look at synthesis because there's a lot of rubrics to look at. Um, if you take the time and you look at it closely, you'll notice while it's in a different direction. Because that was how our brains worked, uh, it has the same, uh, number of categories. We used pretty much the same categories that we were, uh, assessing them under. So I did the content, organization, textual evidence, and then we mentioned the formatting. It's not the exact same as the Sback, um, because we're doing longer writing assessments. Our assessments tend to have a little bit more rigor, um, and so we needed to create a rubric that aligned with. Our teaching, but we use the smarter balance to jump the off point. Because that students will know where they are at for that test and for those skills. You'll also see that this nice handy single point rubric. It's the same thing as this, just in a very user friendly model. So this is what your students would be seeing, because this is a lot to look at, right? So this is what we use as instructors to really see where they're landing. And then this is one of the things that we get, you guys. This is what the students would get, because this is way more user friendly, right?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
And that one that the students get, is that their feedback form?
Yeah.
On their performance.
Yep, yep, exactly, yeah. Um, so we worked really hard to create one of these for each one of those areas. As well as other things we do, like we did one for our presentations, we did one for annotated biographies. We've made, um, others, we're just looking at those few. Um, there are questions about how we're.
Lot of ass.
Yeah, there is.
I would comment, um, the rubrics are really helpful because like coming from a writing standpoint. You could pinpoint like what you need to work on and that led to a lot of. Knowing what to get better at opposed to like when a teacher just give you a grade and you're like, oh, you're writing wrong. Where the hell is you like enhance your skills for them, yeah?
Yeah, and now through nine, ten, eleven, twelve, they'll all be seeing the same rubrics. Which I think will be really helpful them to see how progressing year after year. And I'll show you just back here how that we're in these space. And I didn't pay, I didn't pay. So, where am I? So, that was what we worked on last year. So that took a ton of time. Um, to put up there and to align all of those. So this year, um, we decided we really wanted to focus on synthesis. Um, we found that a lot of our students, one of their big skills, just anecdotally that they were lacking. Is an ability to do really thorough research and to evaluate sources. In a real life sort of way. Um, they can do it kind of fundamentally. But not in ways that we found would be really helpful for them in their next steps in life. Uh, so that was what we really wanted to focus on for this year, and I'll show you an example of that in just a second. And this year we also created a data tracker and we begun inputting our data into it and I'll talk about that as well. And next year, we're gonna move forward, um, continue to travel with that and I'm really excited to adjust our instructional. What I wanna talk about next is our synthesis articulation. So I'm gonna give you. I only have it, these were like kind of fat, so I only made enough for y'all up here. And again, I'm not expecting you to read this right in a second, but if you guys, um, at some point. Why don't you work? Um, do all of you have then a? Um, yes, those guys, yeah, perfect.
Just need research.
Yes, so if you look at the Sback one, um, it's a lot. But it's basically a sample of what the students will get on the actual Sback test. So what they'll be asked you is to read through a bunch of little tiny sources, uh, in my opinion, those tiny sources they probably. And so they'll have like what, three or four sources that they read through. And then they are asked to take information from all of those sources. And turn it into a small essay or an extended writing, as they say. So this is a skill that we find on the smarter balance test. And also, we've identified they are going to use throughout their lives. Think about how many times you have searched for things, found information about things and needed to put it in one place, right? Like that is something we do all the time and students have got to be able to do this. But that's what we really focused on this year. Uh, I hand him out to everybody also a copy of some different synthesis prompts throughout their grade levels. Um. Some of the grades have already done this one, like my seniors haven't yet, that's our next prompt we're doing. Uh, but I just wanted you guys to have a example of what kind of prompts they're getting under the synthesis, um, skill. And I was also going to show you, this is what I'm excited about. Uh, we also worked to articulate synthesis throughout grades nine, ten and eleven. I think maybe the most important thing to focus on here that I find the most interesting that we worked on. Is really like looking at sources by each grade level. So. You know, we talked about what they wanted, we wanted them to be able to do by the time they graduated. Um, whether students are moving on to, oh wait, I'm gonna back track. One thing I wanna note is. We have different tracks for honor students and kind of the standard nine, ten, eleven, twelve. I'm just talking about those standard classes. The honors track. Uh, does very similar stuff, but they're preparing for AP Lit, they're preparing for any one twenty-one. So while you're thinking about this, this is just those standard English classes, not the honors track. So I, I don't know, I just like to think that out of my head. So what we determined is kind of like, students will like level up each year. By what kind of source they, like what kind of sources they're interfacing with. Um, and how they are reading those sources and how they're evaluating them. So ninth graders, um, what we decided is that the teacher will be providing most of the sources. But they'll be all different types of sources. So for example, a movie. Uh, a scholarly source, uh, which would be like something from an academic journal. Something from a scientific journal, those would be read together and they would be learning how to annotate, okay? They'd be learning the basics of source evaluation and talking about each, um, source for its validity. Tenth grade, uh, the teacher would be providing most of the sources and you actually have those two prompts. Um, so for example, the sophomores, they use a novel and then sources to synthesize that. So they get like, I think, I just talked to Kyla about this today. She said they have like eleven different sources that they looked at. Which included YouTube, like a valid YouTube video, um, a story, an article, a scholarly source. And the book, and then they got to choose three of them and found one of their own sources, okay? Eleventh grade, they level up again, um, in which they'll be provided with some sources. But now they're gonna learn how to find scholarly sources. We add that to the LCC database, uh, which is really cool. This is something that, um, I learned again anecdotally that a lot of students graduate, they're like, oh my gosh, I don't know how to use a database. So we wanted to be able to start introducing that, uh, in high school. Um, and then twelfth grade, this is when like this is their last hurrah or they're out there. Um, and I teach the twelve graders and, um, this is when they're beginning, though they're finding all of their own sources. So we're about to embark on this journey, uh, right after winter break. And they will then be getting to find one of their own scholarly sources. A lot of information. Does anybody have questions about synthesis articulation? And what synthesis is or what we're doing?
I, I have a couple of questions and they may be tangential, so if they're unrelated, just say we can.
Good.
Okay, so the first one is, um, like in the rubric, not necessarily for synthesis, but for everything. Writing convention. So I've literally just went through eighty applications in my job and they don't know how to use commas. They don't know, it must be a process to go before the S or after the S.
Right.
So what are you finding in the writing samples and how do you correct for basic, like the convention if I'm using it right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ken, you helped me remember to come back to that question because it absolutely relates to my next slide.
Perfect.
Okay, do you have a?
I, I did. What was my next question? Um. Darn it, harder I'm taking.
Oh, let me know, yeah, I will. Okay, but this perfectly peeks back on the next thing I'm going to talk about. Which is how accurate we're using this data. Everybody's heard everything to talk about. So my magnum focus was building, um, this wonderful spreadsheet. This is just a screenshot of it. Um, so I was protecting student information, but this is essentially what it looks like. So as you can see, it tells us what class it is, the sophomore. Um, I have different tabs for freshman class, sophomore, senior, senior, um. And the way it works is you'll see up there next to skill, they'll have literary analysis, synthesis and argumentative. And linked with that is each prompt and each rubric. So we're using this as a team and we just developed this because we finally developed all our infrastructure. I know it might seem kind of crazy for it to take three years to get to this point. But each one of those steps took hours and hours and hours and without that infrastructure we built. We couldn't cohesively compare data, because like I said, it was apples and oranges up until this point. Now, we're like, oh, we all have the same skill we're looking at, we have the exact same measure we're looking at. And it's, I'm, I'm excited about it. Um, so you'll see that this one's like literary analysis. So for each grade level, we put in the students and we broke it down into those different aggregates. So it matches exactly what's on the rubric, ideas, content, organization, textual evidence, formatting and invention. And then we just did an overall, uh, whether they met, did not meet or did not test on that standard. So where we are at today in our lives is. So where we are at today in our lives is. We just started quarter two of the school year, so most of these, most of us in the E L A department have done two essays, we need about four. Um, and as you know, we're on a four by four schedule, so we only have half the students. Um, at this point, we'll get the other half in the spring. So what we are starting to do now is to look at our data. Um. We went in and popped in all of this data, so every single grade level has the data for the students that we've had. Uh, what we're able to do today with our time is we sat down and we just looked at the overall, right? And we sat down and we talked about those students that did not meet and those students that did not test. And we were able to talk about them in real time of why they did not meet and why they did not test. To see if there was anything like across the board that we were facing. Um, we took notes as we went um to talk about the students and see if there's any trends. With it in general, um, the biggest thing we talked about was chronic absenteeism. Was the biggest factor in students not meeting or not testing. There were more students who ended up not. Testing, which meant they never turned any assignment rather than did not meet, and they were all students with chronic absenteeism. Or students who joined us late into the school year and missed a lot of content. So our next step, though, and our next meeting, is we're gonna look at the aggregate data. So we're gonna look at each one of those areas. So for example, formatting and conventions, and we're gonna look and see. Is there a huge swath of freshmen, this is just these things, yeah, not real, um, who, who are not meeting in formatting and conventions? If that's the case, how are we gonna address our, adjust our instructional practices? So, to answer your question, that's our next step. Um, because now we finally are able to, like, look at this data. Um, any questions about this?
I have one question. You, you're talking about the, this group of students, half the students get through their first semester. Uh, with the L A and then the second half of the students in the build, uh, the second semester. The testing window, and when they test, how many opportunities do they get to get feedback before the assessment comes, the S VAC?
Oh, that's a, oh, before the S VAC.
Second half of the students.
Um. I don't teach the eleventh graders, um. Uh, when is the test this year?
So the test for the first half of the students will be the first half of. Or sorry, the, the, the first week of February. And then the second group, we're trying to do as late in May as we can, so that we get as much feedback as they can. So we test them in two different groups based on how they take it. This very first year, we went and go four by four, it was awesome because they opened the state test January tenth. Which meant we could test in that class that they were in with that teacher. Last year, they moved it to February, so our kids are done and have moved on to second term, so we have to pull them. To do their state testing, which that's when your numbers go down as well. Um, so they will have um the majority of the term. Um, so they'll have lots of opportunities for feedback with the rubric, um, because we won't do it until. Yeah, mid-May. I didn't bring that calendar, sorry, but it's like May, I don't even like. We're, we're like right up to the line, what's the very last day we could do it and still get it done by the deadline?
So in theory, though, they'll have all of freshman year, all of sophomore year. And then I would say at least two writing samples in their English class to do with here, for the test. Um. And that big writing. Yes, big writing examples, um, like whole essays, not like, um, they're pretty short from the S VAC. Um, and I can come back to questions about this, but this also really um kind of leads me to our next steps. And what I think of is the importance of this data that we're collecting. So. We're obviously gonna add a moving lead as the year continues, this is only half of our students we've been looking at. Um, I'm excited to look at the aggregate data that Lucy brought up to actually look at like. What part specifically today, I mean, we had an hour and a half, right, um, with my P L C today, so. I'm excited to break that data down. Um. I'm excited to be able to adjust the instruction practice to pinpoint areas for improvement. We're also planning on adding uh a column for interim assessment data for ninth and tenth grade. And then review the honors track and articulate their writing skills. Um. You know, and all is really, I think that it's really important uh to look at this in-house data. Uh, I think that the S VAC is a really important measure as a statewide measure, and I think that it has a lot of merit and a lot of value. For how we get funding, how we are perceived optically. Um, but I think if we like really want to see what our students are doing and really use data in our classrooms. This in-house data is going to serve the English department so well. Like, we were able to look at students in real time, not a full year later when they're seniors. To see where they are at in each of these categories and then be able to, like. We could look at this and by the end of the year, be adjusting our instructional strategies. Um, and you know, I know that consistently getting students to take the S VAC test now that it is not. A graduation requirement is increasingly difficult. Um, and I think it's really important to be like coupling this data along with that if we're like really looking at what our students are doing. And I would encourage all of you to do that. And I'm talking.
So a question, yeah, are, so all eleventh graders take the S VAC?
Even that for those who opt out?
Okay, so hypothetically, that it, it is a grade level test for those who choose to do it, okay? And that would include those honor track students, but right now we're not.
Those, okay, sorry, finish.
Oh, so, but so, but right now, we're not really looking at how they're like articulating some of their skills in the same way. Like, they're getting the rubric, but we're not really tracking them at this point, so.
Right.
So we wouldn't have an idea of how well they would potentially test, because I mean, that is what this data is gonna give you, right? Like, we're gonna be able to say, like, look, our kids, we, we see this rubric, we know that they're gonna be able to get the S VAC and do the thing, right? That's the goal. Okay, so I'm just saying to that group right now, we're starting kind of with the, the bottom piece of like, hey, these are the kids that maybe are not showing up. And we wanna see how we can support them to be successful in this, and then we're gonna, you're gonna move into looking at.
Yeah, and I think also. I think maybe what I'm also really trying to show is that. We are very much preparing those students to take the state test. We align all of our information with the state test. But we find these assessments to be more crucial to us as a team for like how our students are doing.
And for whatever they're gonna do go secondary, right? So you're, we were talking about kind of the life piece of like being able to analyze data in a certain way. Or, or access that information, or, you know.
Like, I really, I really would like to stress that, like. Our alignment isn't necessarily trying to bundle them to do super well on the state test because so many of them opt out of it. But it is to also show the same type of data to show where they are at. Since so many of them are opting out, it's really necessary to have this other piece of information, this tool that we can look at.
And maybe even sharing with the student, like, hey, you realize you've done really great off this rubric, you would, if you choose to take the, the, you know. State test, you're probably gonna do fairly well, and it'd kind of need to see. I mean, that is kind of an empowering thing to have that for them already. Where they know that they're prepared for it, because as a student, a lot, having a student, a lot of times, that's the fear, is am I prepared, am I gonna do well?
Right.
Right? So should I keep the college credit? Am I gonna be able to pass and, and have this be a successful?
And I would say that those honors students, I don't, maybe I heard the question differently, um. What she presented tonight was based on um. Students who are not in the honors classes, but that data and the, the rubrics and that information is still being used the same way with the honors classes. It's just that you only have one, you're, you know, in the freshman person, there's two other freshmen. And so when you look at it across the board, there's not a, a comparison, but each, each class, the data's being looked at to support that student writing.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and that was how I, that's what I, that was my understanding.
Different goals for the, like, like I said, like, we're trying to prepare them for AP, like, AP literature is its own entity, like, it's a totally different task. It's a totally different curriculum. It's harder to like fit this in in the same way, I don't know.
So in my mind, I was actually kind of going to Lacey's piece, so I again have someone who likes to write. And sometimes it is the small grammatical pieces, like the appropriate comma and the things, you know? But he, I, he, he does well at writing, but sometimes it's a smaller thing, so that's why I. But they're getting that from the rubric, he'll know, like, hey, maybe we're from here. Those types of things. So I was just curious, um, just how, how the overlap would work, like, for the long term.
Yeah, well, what I would like to do, like I said, next, is to start plugging in that honors data. Um, I don't know that Deborah. I don't know that she started honors when I left and become very different first of the um later term of the school year.
Fair.
But yes, that's our next step as well, because that data is really important too. And it's.
I think it's really cool. I just wanna say that I think being able to have the real time information to know how, like you said, to kind of adjust. Be able to give them the support before they move to the next piece, or maybe kind of scuff that into the next year.
Yeah.
And as a team to be able to have that information.
Yeah, I'm actually, this is some, like, I've been at Crystal for ten years, and I like, this is gonna sound really jingy, but I like actually dreamed of doing this. We have a really great E L A team right now, um, we have Deborah and Kyla, who are like on top of it and good at it, and it's. I'm excited to be able to like plug this data in and like look at it now.
Well, thank you for sharing this with us.
Do they have more questions for me?
Two.
Yeah, I wrote them down, so I don't forget about that.
Thanks.
So the first, my first question is. If, if there's, uh, writing is so integral to ev, to al, to almost every discipline, right? Like science, math, numbers.
Yeah.
But is there opportunities once you start getting a. Uniform way of looking and knowing like the freshman class needs help with.
Yeah.
Can you then work with history teachers and others to say, like, still do your history thing, but the one thing. Across everything you want the freshman doing is this one thing.
Yeah, and I think that's like, when we have this information, if I can say, oh my gosh. Keep these poor freshmen, I keep using them as our. Is like, oh my gosh, none of our freshmen can do citations at all, they have no idea, they missed that during COVID. We can say as a staff, like, look at this, you know, in one of our P D's, like. Here's how we can incorporate citations across content areas.
And we have a, a, a rubric that's used for across the, the contents, the science language charts, because that's like the others who are specific. But like she said, it would be nice to be able to then see what the data says and incorporate that into the.
Yeah, I was, I was remembering even when Jordan was taking public speaking. She had, like, you were using narrative, persuasive, argumentative, I remember she had different speeches she had to write, right? And there was a template of this many paragraphs, this is a persuasive speech, this is a narrative. And so then if I think of Mike's question of opportunities for feedback, if you know a class is struggling. Even public speaking in a small way would give them a chance to get that, because now you have a uniform way of seeing what.
Yeah, and this is why I think this data is cool, because, like I said, with the S VAC. What's hard about it, especially in high school, even when our students are taking it with fidelity. And taking it, all of them taking it, is we don't, we're, we just got the data, these kids are seniors. Some of them only have three weeks left in English class, we'd like, that's really hard to use, right? We have eighth grade stuff, of course, um, but the first time they get tested is in the eleventh grade. Um, and so, you know, while I think that this is preparing them, for those tests that, you know, are helpful for. Figure things outside of my, you know, scope, um, I think that this is like really important for our practice.
It's like you invented the high school irony that I see in kindergarten at the high buddy meeting, and they get like the scores immediately, you just did that for.
Yeah, it might take like two to three weeks, so.
Sure.
I mean.
But you got. My second question was, um, I was thinking, again, those applications that I just read, I could tell when they were using chat G P T.
Yeah.
Their supplemental essay. How, how are you, like, are you seeing that struggle and you can find that and you're like, do this again without?
Yeah, and I could talk about some of the practices that we use, um.
Like, I don't want you to spill the secret on how you figure that out.
I don't think there needs to be, I think that, uh, as a staff, we kind of started recognizing. Students using chat G P T probably last year, like way more, I think like smattery used it here and there for that, but it wasn't like widespread. Um, and the way, you know, we've talked, I mean, the English department, and I've talked anecdotally, like the history department in this area, though it's a lot easier to. Like cheat via writing, um, and we haven't, you know, again, this is just like us sharing information with one another. But what a lot of us have done is putting into our syllabus. Uh, information about chat G P T and what happens if you use it, um, that it is like, um, the same level of plagiarism, so whatever your classroom. Um, kind of standard is for that, um. And I was trying to use like. A I checkers, and they're just not accurate, and then you're in like an argument with a student who's like, well, I didn't use A I. They're like, well, you definitely did, but I have no way to prove it. So what a lot of teachers have started doing, including myself, is that you absolutely need, um. Like, I, what am I making for, um, like a record of your work. So for me and my classroom, what that looks like is they have an outline or graphic organizer that we've done together. This is, we also have a shared graphic organizer in which they have their thesis, they have their topics, they have all of their evidence. And then there needs to be a record, they have to do it on Google Drive, and I have to be able to see the record of their work and their edits. That's how I deal with it. Also, we've been doing more in-class assessments, like I noticed Pam and Deborah is doing handwritten. In-class essays. I've done that, I've used securely, that they can only be, like, so like, what, I just did with my English ten honors, um, because I was. They, they also like, the gray area for them is hard of like, well, I used it just to edit. I'm like, well, this fundamentally does not sound like you, and like, so they have a hard time with that gray area. Um, so to really get like, okay, where are you guys really at? Um, we prepared for an in-class essay, they. Um, this was actually our, like, what would we do, rhetorical analysis for the sophomores? And they did all this preparation, they had the graphic organizers, they were ready to go, and then in an hour and twenty minutes. They wrote an in-class essay on Google Docs, but I used securely to like keep them only on Google Docs. So it was like a.
The teacher hack.
Yeah, so I, I think people are using different strategies like that, okay, um. Very cool. Does everyone have other questions about that? It's, uh, some they work continuously, I don't know if I can work it through, because it's a tool, but, um, I think for a lot of students, they have a hard time with the. Like I said, the gray area of like, how do you use it as a tool without it working instead of you? And I think older students are, older, I mean, they're not a lot better, like seniors, um, I think. Know that gray area, but like sophomores have a hard time, it like slips them into like. That wasn't your.
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah.
Um, I have a high appreciation for the work that you're doing with literacy, and you know, if they're going to survive in life, it's gonna be. Literacy is gonna be a big part of it, it's gonna get them everywhere.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is that every subject area that we teach, but those that are assessed have their own complexities. But they don't have the weight of the standards that you do, or that E L A does.
Yeah.
Uh, so many.
Yeah.
You teach, you can't pitch them all.
Well, I have a whole binder full.
So, uh, the assessments and the data that you're pulling out of those assessments, um, is great for you to know. Uh, but it, it, it would also. Uh, but it 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 would also, if the the school understood what you're trying to tackle here. And how many standards you have to, uh, you know, that you have to address.
Mm hmm.
Uh, and they pick some of those up for you or with you, like the social studies department collaborating with the on writing. And maybe just looking at organization and conventions within their, I mean, you know, that's. That you could certainly use the help.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, and it's true in every school.
Yeah.
And and it just is where the the weight of.
Yeah.
The standards are. So nice job.
Thank you.
On this, I like, I mean, the uh performative assessments and giving the feedback to the kids. That's that's the key.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good on him.
Thank you.
Yes, we've been working really hard. And it's nice to like finally have it all in one place, so we can look at it, or at least move by the end of the year.
Any other questions from anybody or one?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I love knowing the process of how you go about it.
Yeah.
And seeing everything that you're putting together.
Yeah, but I think it's all the nicest, you like, this is how we're using our like the afternoons of like building these things. And it takes like a lot of time, cumulative time, um, to make it happen. And it's nice, like, this has been the first year since we made you, so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. I'm glad your, I mean, glad your voice held out. You've been texting too many kids.
Yeah.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Hey, can I share this with Joel? So if anybody wants the slide.
I don't wanna go in and look at.
Yeah, and you can click on all those links.
Excellent. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Did well.
Okay, come on, and then get back to my agenda. Okay.
You're up.
Yeah, uh, super.
The report, here we go.
The report.
Okay, so lots of data tonight, uh, information, uh, love that.
Yeah, me too.
You got the uh. Bye, good night.
Good night.
The added land uh performance report. Uh, to look at. And um, and then I have some other data for you that kind of aligns with that. Uh, but on my highlights, I'll go over that in just a moment. I wanted to point some things out on the highlights though on bond updates. Uh, October, so the big, they're in progress for the classroom doors and exterior metal doors here at this school. As for safety and security, so any older windows over here and that, like that door right there. They're all gonna have uh steel casings around them and solid doors in every classroom. And on every en- entrance or access to this building. So uh, that's in the progress and we're hitting it. It's it's getting, it's anywhere from. I'd say nine hundred to twelve hundred dollars a door. Replace that. But these are nineteen fifty doors, I mean, you know, they're, they may. Or nineteen forty doors, nineteen forty. So that's in in progress and then uh moving on to uh some of the the high school updates. The baseball softball field uh installation was completed. Uh, some of the touch-ups need to be completed, finished out there. This is the field, the turf only, not the whole. Uh, not the stadium, it's not there, but just the turf is done, canyon. Um, they need to come back and do some finishing touches to to really clean it up nice and tight. And Ryan will be coming back with his crew to do that, uh, when the weather breaks and gets a little bit nicer. We need to do a lot more work on the uh, um, the bullpens. On the pitching mound and things of that nature and then around the bases and stuff that the fields themselves are beautiful. I mean, they're, they're really nice and they're, they uh, they did a good job on those. Right now, they're packing uh the dugout, uh, the dugout areas. For the foundation that's going in there, the concrete and the feet, but tell me those are. Sure, uh, the gym bleachers, it says they'll run twelve six. That they'll be installing them during winter break. Uh, that's at the guidance of, or because of the gangs that are scheduled there between now and then. So they'll be delivered on the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, and then all in the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. And it carries over, they'll do it on, on the weekend, uh, the thirtieth. So we'll have the new bleachers in the gym, uh, the C T E design layout, so all of the, the. Um. The schematics and the design, the different areas within that building that um. I wanted to see in there, uh, in the building, uh, have been submitted to uh the manufacturer. So he is now coming up with the rendering and then we'll look at the rendering with the committee and the committee will then say, hey. You know, this, we like this, we want to change this, or we'd like to see something else or something of that nature. And uh, we're also getting the land use, um, guidelines for the area out there. Uh, where we are going to put that building exactly, uh, at least know our options out there in that area. That outside green house or in that whole. The ticket booth has, well, here it's started in on eleven nine, but it's almost completed. It just needs to be painted now. Looks pretty good. I I have my office in there. And then, uh, no, I keep messing my kids over here. I can't do anything without those all day. Uh, and then the uh, the gym building, so they they started this week to paint the exterior. They finished the interior uh this this weekend or last weekend, maybe the last week or maybe even Monday. Uh, but they've been painting the exterior, but we're gonna have to pull back on that because of the humidity in the air that came. And it doesn't look, it doesn't get attached right or get here right to the building, so. And um, and then we have some more. And then on the finalizing the children for the middle school. And uh, we have another source, patience, bliss. And uh, we, every, the more patients we've had with this, the better we have been able to cut costs. And so we're really getting it down to the final final. By winter break, we will bear the name. Who's going to do the installation and when it's gonna start for the children out there. Or are the air system, I'll just say for that. Any questions online? My updates or activities?
Great update, thank you.
Uh, as far as my activities, I didn't really involve with other superintendents in COSA. And uh, what we're advocating for, for, from our legislature in this next uh go-around. And uh, we have already, uh, our lobbyists are at the highest level with this. Advocate for us at the state level, and I sent you an email today talking about that. So uh, with what we've done is brought in other partner agencies to help advocate with us. Uh, with the super, with our, our superintendent, with our education group of professionals, administrators. And uh, so we'll continue to follow up on those things, which are on the governor's list of initiatives. The process with the legislature, but we need to have our voices heard, so that's our, our strategy. Uh, and I'll keep passing that information on to you as we roll into it. As far as this data here, uh, when we look at our performance data and where we are on that. Things like in mathematics, we were skipping at the middle school at thirty-two percent. And then across the district, we're running at about thirty-four percent, I believe. You know, at thirty-four percent is above the state average by eleven percent or something like that. Those aren't really like great numbers. You would think thirty percent proficiency. And you know, there are seven, several reasons or things that contribute to these numbers. Forty-three percent in science, E L A, and that. Um, you heard us talk about one of them is the absenteeism and the opt-outs. And you know, when we're pulling in sixty, seventy percent of our kids, that can, we don't really have a good sample. That's not a significant sample to pull data from and say, this is what we need to do, or this is what we need to do. But on the horizon and accountability, and the other, one of the other things that we are advocating for is. If you're holding us accountable to this data, then we need some accountability from the state to require it. So if this is what you're measuring the split, put it in as a graduation requirement. The test, the testing, if you're gonna rely on the testing data for that, and that's what you're holding us accountable for, then be accountable for it. Required, so uh, that's what we're advocating for. But when we look at this and you say, oh, my gosh, you know, what's happening here? Um, but as it turns out, when you open this up and look at the back pages like this. Where it's disaggregated and broken down, and you see the performance of our kids. Typically, your most marginalized groups, focal groups of students are performing extremely well. When we're looking at graduation rates, special education, and our Hispanic Latino students and their performance. I mean, those are the highest performing groups in our student body. And typically, it's the opposite. And so those students who are being successful within their groups contribute to the whole. And are kind of lifting up the, the success or achievement levels of all, uh, especially. In the, the uh graduation rates on time and five-year, which are, are very high. High enough in the F A D F. When um, U S News has done the best schools, best high schools of America study this year. And this is consistent. We've been consistent over three years. Uh, but just reflecting off of this data, these five success. Indicators. Um, U S best high schools, uh, looks at thirty percent. Of their, their survey, their assessment is based on college readiness. Twenty percent is on assessment, your state assessment proficiency, twenty percent is on state assessment performance. Ten percent is on underserved student performance, ten percent on college curriculum breadth. And then ten percent on graduation rate. So that is a hundred percent of how they're assessing all the high schools in America to determine where they rank. Over twenty-seven thousand high schools in America, and they will let it down to twenty-five thousand. And those, by that criteria, and then those twenty-five thousand are ranked. Of the twenty-five thousand ranked across the country, we come in at number five thousand six hundred and forty-two. Which is in the top twenty-two percent of the nation. Now, when you're looking at this, you don't see that, I mean, you know, that doesn't pop out to you. But that is the real deal. I mean, that's our, this is a national assessment. Of the number of three hundred and forty-four high schools in America, we come out number fifty-one, we're in the top fifteen percent. We were in the top twenty percent three years ago. And then uh, as far as Lake County goes, uh, we're number four in town. And there's some, you know, and we have been number three and number four for the past few years. So we're in the top twenty percent in the county. And some of our schools in the county are in the top two percent of the state. The two schools that are ahead of us are in the top two percent of the state. And they are in the top one thousand of the schools in America. And that's South Eugene and Sheldon. So, you know, we're holding our own, holding on. We can do better. But we're not tanking. When we're at twenty-two percent nationally, that's eighty-eight percent. Been there under. We're, I mean, that's pretty significant to look at. It's not to say we're satisfied by anything. But um, but we have things that, that highlight our, our district. Our schools and what we're doing. And numbers have shown us what we're doing. We're on track. So we're getting there and uh, E L A, having the adoption go through two years of going. The E L A adoption.
Three.
Three. And in year three is where you look for the meat. What is happening in year three after that adoption? And you're hearing the work that's going on in there. The same thing will follow with math, science, health, whatever it is. And so we're building, this is what we're building on the top. So we look for good things in the future. The problem, it sounds like we're gonna see some different numbers, and she's saying that they're focused on what they're doing. And how they're assessing the kids for the standards that they wanna see them perform well in this school. Well, that's gonna show up on these assessments. And when the state requires the assessment and we're applying these formative assessments to show state standards. We're gonna, it's not gonna be like we're starting from ground zero. We're, we're already ahead of that. That time or that requirement coming to us. So it's good stuff. That's questions or? Good. Then it will be great.
Well, I think in that article, didn't it say, I think like the one area at the high school level that, that. We assume that we're a little bit lower than some of the other Lake County schools was the college and career readiness component. But I think with like, if you think of the bomb, the C T E, and where we're headed, and there's opportunities that would be provided. It'll be interesting to see in a few years how that changes those numbers, right? That was the thing that kind of, I mean, that's the one thing that stuck out to me in other areas. I saw whether it was okay, we're, we're doing a great job. Um, so to me, that was, I thought that was really interesting, because that is like the strategic planning where we're headed, where we're going. And so it'll be really interesting to see this in my opinion, in a few years, when all of these amazing things that are being laid. Those foundations being, you know, are in full effect.
Yeah. So, um, you know, she, I mean, it's. Oh, no, the superintendent, I haven't put that on the board anywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, whoever's at the table, this is what we're, what we're about. This is what we're, we're working from and, and we're. I mean, this is where we are now, but we're, we're going to higher places. We're not content, uh, by any means. So. Uh. That's okay. Any questions or anything else? No, just keep it going, since we're good.
Are you willing to put them in a bus? Are we?
No, I just feel like we have.
We have a new truck over there, or not a new truck, is it a Tesla that we're doing?
Oh, okay, that makes sense. We're not, we're not putting, we're not talking about the school district buying a Tesla. Not, not a part of the public record, but I would be a part of it. Go to my Tesla. All right, uh, Joel indicated that we have no public comment register, so we can pass that. Unfinished business, there is a January board meeting date reminder. I'm assuming that's because we moved the meeting date back since school's starting. Okay, so the regular board meeting is the fifteenth at six P M. Okay, uh, new business, we have a budget calendar that we need to approve. I believe that was action, right?
Yes.
Yes, action, okay. Um, I apologize, um, our leadership couldn't be here tonight, so I'm filling in, running the meeting, but I wasn't. I don't know the behind the scenes. I'm assuming this calendar is kind of the same template that we've used in the past, so not much different, okay?
All the dates in that calendar are pretty long.
Okay. Okay, and so we have, we've got a whole budget committee. We don't have any vacancies? You'll have to enter this probably in January or take action to want to post because we've got two.
Chris, you have two.
With, um, and Erin. Okay, I'm looking right at the top and now I'm seeing that. Okay, two. Okay, so, so in January, we can add that as something that the board can discuss and post, um, and then the dates. All follow through. Any questions about that? It looks like continuing on Zoom since that's an easy presentation platform to do that. Okay. If there's no questions, I'll take a motion.
I'm up to approve. What am I looking at? A budget calendar for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five?
Let's check into that.
Thank you. All in favor? That is humanus. Great. Thank you for that. Okay, the next, uh, new business item is information about the attic lands report cards. That Mike talked about in his report. Does any, is there any other questions or thoughts about those? Appreciate you putting those in the packet for us so that we can see that.
We'll need to post those on the website too, Joel.
Yeah, advice. Yeah, good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is reinforcement information. So I believe that's board, uh, board reports. Mike, do you have anything you wanna share?
Yeah, uh, a couple of things. I went, been to Boys and Girls Basketball being when they beat Marish. Uh, and what? The, the other thing, I went to a Laney S D meeting and, uh. It really turned out really well because I called Mike up and said, no. Uh, what's going on in the district? I've been really busy here working, so. Uh, I went in, you know, I had a, yeah, and he told me about the, uh, where we're ranked in the country, where we're ranked in the states, so.
You got to go brag.
Yeah, I tried to keep it toned down, but I had, had a lot of fun and, and talking about that. And the thing that, when I slipped through that meeting, uh, it was very well received by everybody there. The two things that jumped out to me out of that, I mean, was the way the Yelts kids are doing against everybody else. And I think they're, uh. Like the, the white kids, they're like, I don't know, eight or ten percent of, of their bunch of the brave, some of the classes and stuff, which is. They're, they're doing really well. But the one that really got it, uh, stood out to me was. His ability, his ability, how high the percentages are on time graduating. And I had, had the privilege to tell him that everybody in Laney S D, thanks for helping us out on that one. That one over pretty good.
Good.
But I almost got a dessert out of that. But that's the only two things.
Excellent.
Mary? I managed to walk over and look at the bills. I haven't really, I haven't been home, but I like really not had much time. Um, so I'm hoping to attend some basketball games soon, uh, but I think it's walk around the field. I just wanna say that it looks amazing. Um, that is the extent of what I've done.
It's hard when November is so full with, uh, holiday stuff too, right? Kids are in preschool and, yeah.
Looks just gonna be home, right?
Yeah, well, for me, it really has been just kind of was getting ready for. Um, like I was gonna go to the basketball game and then I ended up having a meeting there and like, it just, it just hasn't been, but I have a lot of time. Um, but yeah, that's okay.
I'm glad you're here now. Thanks. Welcome back. Thank you.
Um, I just went to the fall sports award, got to endure key man volleyball and counterhoppin'.
Good.
My child is not a volleyball there. I bless his heart for trying. And wrestling, I got to endure my first wrestling week. I have a really good padded chair. And great step toward, um. And basketball games, but, but it's sports stuff.
Awesome, awesome. Um, I, what I first wanna highlight is, um, so. So in my effort to keep everybody updated on advocacy and how we can help, um, with advocacy in the next legislative session. Mike certainly knows a lot more details through COSA, but I attended two advocacy webinars from O S B A. And they identified where their focus is gonna be. Um, and so I'll read these. I can, I can put them in an email if you're like, I wanna be able to, because I keep referring back to the screenshot I took up to the PowerPoint. So funding, there's three main categories. Funding is one. And within funding, there's four areas that they really wanna push on. Um, the first is the sped cap. And so Chanel walked us through how there's a cap on the special education. Um, piece and being able to remove that. The second, uh, area of funding is summer learning. Which I was really happy to hear because we're helped, I mean, the high school has credit recovery, middle school and elementary school is like kind of keeping up. Uh, um, and so we've done great with that. The third is early literacy. And then the fourth is facilities. So, um, what I wanna be able to do is work with Mike and probably Amy and Chanel and Joel. Over the next month, sometime before the legislative session starts. Is to get like a one page, like Chriswell, Chriswell at a glance, one page. That tells the story of our struggles and where we wanna go, right? Where we wanna go would be the strategic plan. Um, focused on each of these and then, you know, identifying the funding struggles that we have and the gap that we have with each of those areas. So that if we're called to go advocate or speak in a committee about it, we've got some facts ready to go with that. So it was helpful to learn these, so we know where to focus. The other two main categories. Uh, so funding is one, is accountability. And under there, they've focused on unfunded mandates. So I'm sure there's like tons of areas that you can go with that. We'll need some help narrowing down how we wanna tell Chriswell's story with that. And then the third area is addressing chronic absenteeism. So it's showing up now, you know, Liz mentioned that and you've mentioned that in terms of how we're able to meet some of those numbers. So those are the three, three main areas O S B A wants. To talk about, focus on, and then get people to Salem to help testify on. So, um.
That's right.
All, all bribe, so we don't have to be as well as. Those, those are not fun to stay with, but those, so those are the areas. Um, let's see. The, the next thing to highlight, if you didn't already see an email, but I know. Kendra Anderson's been trying to round up judges and people to help us host F B L A.
I volunteer for them.
Sweet, I was gonna say, if you guys have not logged into the spreadsheet, um, potentially, Mike, you would be a great judge. I judged for them at the regionals when it was down south. Actually had a blast. I wish I could have done it all day long. But they ran out of things that they needed to judge for, so I had to come back and.
When, when does that start?
Um, we're hosting it January, is it January thirty first? So just to plug in that it's super cool, middle school and high school, all the teams come to compete. You get to give kids feedback, um, they have it well organized, but we'll need a lot of staff to do it.
The Kendra, is there like, is an email, is there a link to somewhere? She emailed me, uh, like my work email and asked me. And I had said I would, I, I don't have the spreadsheet. I don't know.
You're doing the same thing to me. I have not, not a spreadsheet today. Okay, so I know there's a spreadsheet because I plugged my name into it, so if you reach out to them. Either they're entering your name in the spreadsheet, so as long as you tell them, um. That you're, that you're interested, they'll get your name on the spreadsheet. So they may have like, not shared.
Over the chapter, I didn't know if it was something you, you knew where it was or if they missed an email.
Um, I'm sure, I'm sure I probably had it because she emailed it to me like a couple of months ago, so I put my name on it. So that's the visual I have in my head, but they're rounding up volunteers because January thirty first is gonna be around the corner. Right? Okay, so there's my.
Do we need, do you have an email handy that we?
Uh, email, either email or call Kendra or Julie Jolie and then over at the middle school. Because it's gonna be hosted over at the middle school.
Okay.
Um, and let them know that you wanna volunteer and then mark out your full day so that you can come help do whatever they need.
It's okay. Be okay to just go by and talk to them.
Yeah, 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 yeah. They're just trying to round up support, so.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to do that.
Okay.
I'm getting really old, so I'm gonna have to have a reminder, but. Maybe I can brush something on my nose.
Yeah, they'll love it. You can call them, text them, anything, uh, but January thirty first is the day.
Did you say that you wanted help with that? I'm emailing Julie right now.
Oh, sweet.
Oh, okay.
I think, um, what is the advocacy like up to seven? What does that look like? What did we? What would we be there to do? Like, could we go as a collective group to join a committee? The one person that goes up? Like, what does that look like?
So, um, the, it would be testifying in a, two, two options, really. Testifying in a committee and each committee has different rules, like the Senate or the House could have different rules on time. So you could have. Highlight like. The bill that you're currently discussing, this is how it would impact Chriswell. We need the sped cap removed. And because you've got your one sheet that we need to have in advance, we've got statistics to plug in our three or four minutes. So the committee testifying is one option. The second is, um. If O S B A organizes a day for board members to go up, then the House and senators are available. And we are slotted into timeframes where we have ten or fifteen minutes of each one and we would rotate as it like. So if three or four of us went up, we would move as a group as Chriswell and go sit with them for ten or fifteen minutes and tell our story one on one. Not in a public hearing, but in their office. I've done that before. And if they don't organize a day like that, then when we have information and we know a bill is coming. I, you know, we can email and say, two of us wanna come, you know, Senator Przyanski. Can we get ten to fifteen minutes of your time? Or a half an hour of your time. We wanna inform you of what this bill that you're hearing in two weeks is gonna mean for Chriswell.
Thank you for that alert.
Yeah, does that help?
Yeah, it's very helpful.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yeah, you're the perfect person for this. A hundred percent.
Another way to, yeah, that, that could work is having all of our data together. And inviting them to a board meeting to share with them. As well as the good things that are happening here.
Yeah.
You know, with the, the bond that we passed, the awesome grant, besides the grants, these are the things that are happening around our district, our performance. You know, we're doing well, but we need a little more. Uh. Probably, so we wanted to share some information. They, they don't always wanna hear how, why, why, why. If we can show them, this is what we're doing.
Well, maybe you need more than halfway.
Good, yeah.
When did you say? You say it was in January? So the legislative session starts in January and then, um. Folks behind the scenes are already starting to draft ideas of bills, right? Like senators, your representatives need to sponsor them. So they're working with their people to sponsor what they want. And then, once it, once it opens, um, the session will open, committees will open, and then they can unleash a flurry of bills. And some will get picked up and sponsored, some will get combined, because if you're working on one and I'm working on one and they're similar, they combine. So they start to get condensed down, some get dropped, some don't have enough support, so a lot of them die in committee. But the ones that you see starting to get picked up and get posted on a committee agenda to move forward, those have the most slakes. And that's where we would want to, for the Salem option of lobbying.
So we don't, we don't know yet what those bills will look like, like what's coming, what's moving forward.
I think O S B A chooses their topics. Um, I know through other professional means. Like we, we know of what people are gonna start lobbying and pushing. Um, and so we don't know specifics, but education is gonna be a focus. If we have lobbyists working on these areas. There, there's gonna be more momentum behind those bills because the lobbyists are gonna be there, the representatives are gonna get information. They're gonna know people are, like, there's pressure behind them, and so they're gonna wanna sponsor something that's good for the district. Um, so there's, it's kind of like where the storms all start to coalesce.
That's fun. I'm just keeping the update.
No, but I'm, I'm more than happy to anybody that wants to go, because I, I wanna be able to.
I wouldn't find that anymore about to process. I definitely. Think that this is, it's kind of interesting and I'm, I'm curious to see what. What comes with the storm.
He cannot come with me.
Well, after the government or the government, the governor, uh. You know, after the legislature sees her proposed budget and then they start to comment on her proposed budget.
Yeah.
Then we can, that's a starting place for advocacy for us, for the other things. So, uh, her proposed budget is up one billion, one point two, I think. Which covers ground on, on some things. A lot of things. It's a very, probably be one biggest move that we've seen, uh, for public education. As much as all I've been here, as far as making, gaining ground on funding. But some things that are left unfunded, like the sped cap. At eleven percent. And I were, it's still underfunded across the, the state by three hundred and fifty million. You know, and this is how it impacts us and we really need support on raising that cap fifteen percent. That's the advocacy angle on that one. And, uh, a couple of others. So we're really, again, as super dependents on. The ones that are not being covered by the governor's proposed budget. That would be the, and then these. For this amount kind of thing.
How's our sped cap compared to? Other states or nationally?
It didn't, I really don't know, but I would think that every state has impacted. Just as we are with the numbers of kids because of the. Well, where we're at, you know, as a country and what's happened to us with COVID and all those other things combined. But, um, we don't know that every state has a state cap. They receive federal dollars for special education and then it goes to special education. Ours, they receive special education dollars from the federal government. And then they have a cap on what a district can claim.
Do we know when that happened? Does I, is that something, but do we know in Oregon?
So it's, it's part of the state school formula and every state does their funding differently, right? Like all of our money's collected and it goes to the state and then it gets redistributed. Not every state even does that.
Right.
So.
But like the cap piece, like us having one, I, I, I don't, I don't know. It's always been there since I can. But.
Formula came up when they re, re, when they. Uh, re, reconstructed the formula on House Bill. Uh, or about measure five. They had to reconfigure state funding with valid measure five passed. And so that may be when this cap came in, so that would be in nineteen ninety.
Seven, nineteen ninety seven was when measure, wasn't that? When the state, when the.
Nineties is when we started to get hit by.
Yeah.
Valid measure five. Or where, where, uh, education funding could apply to valid measure five because that pulled back from. So.
So it's been in there a long time. Once in high school, yeah.
She, that was in elementary school.
All right, all right. Anything else for reports? Okay, um, any board requests or future agenda items? Please email into Mike and Debbie and Candace. And then there's some reminders of, uh, no school days, when classes resume on January seventh, our next board meeting is the fifteenth. Okay? Anything else? Otherwise, we are good.